Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Monday, April 22, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. For guest speakers, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Hold a clerk, please, take the roll.
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are, are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Sover, Oxford, United Kingdom. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the Council of European Studies, the African Studies Association, the Association for Asian Studies, and the American Studies Association. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Founder Talioje Nauschente. TLNS application, RLM, public comment, 22 April 2024. Concern of Pittsburgh City Council is diversity. RLMPC focus today, this afternoon, Pittsburgh City linguistic diversity. We have heard in this council room the welcoming sounding expression from Ed Geinie, quote, "How y'all doing?" But left arm elbow bent up, treble clef, key of G major, F is sharp scale. A Europe reference, consider how y'all doing in the language of the most important nation in Europe with which the highest number of US Americans and Pittsburghers express ancestral ethnic identification, that is Germany, therefore Deutsch. Wie geht es euch allen? Imagine Lavelle opening a regular meeting of City Council saying, "Wie geht es euch allen?" Germanium element 32. Africa reference, consider how y'all doing using one of the three prime languages of the most important nation in my view in Africa. There are more than 500 languages in Nigeria. Hausa is one of the three prime ones representing the second largest Pittsburgh regional identity, black African descent. Yaya Kake. Imagine Lavelle insisting that one proclamation per month be in English and Hausa, or Swahili, or Arabic. I would. Asia reference, consider how y'all doing in the languages of the three most important nations in Asia, in our view, representing the third largest Pittsburgh regional identity, Asian descent. Japan, Nihongo, Jenkei de Sukka. China, Zhongwen. Nimenhama, India, Hindi, Tu Kaiser Hai. Imagine Lavelle requiring council meeting agendas in English and Japanese and/or Chinese and/or Hindi. I would. And from Latin America, consider how y'all doing in Español. Como vosotros estás?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mallory Brangin.
Hello. Hi, I'm Mallory. I live in Lawrenceville. I'm speaking in opposition to the ShotSpotter contract renewal. I do not support a budget increase, nor do I support this indiscriminate surveillance tech in Pittsburgh neighborhoods. ShotSpotter surveillance does not make us safer. There is no conclusive evidence that ShotSpotter reduces the number of homicides involving guns. ShotSpotter has not made publicly available detailed data of how it works, nor has it published any peer-reviewed studies showing its benefits. I'm not trained in urban planning, and I presume you cannot please everyone, but the recently implemented surveillance tech is rehashing old sentiments that gave traction to redlining neighborhoods in the 1930s. I have a map of where ShotSpotter microphones are currently placed in Pittsburgh, and I hope you all have had a chance to look at the current locations. Yesterday, I showed members of my church this map, and many of them were very uncomfortable about what this distribution says about how we police our neighborhoods. Other members didn't even know we have passive listening devices scattered throughout the city. The existing ShotSpotter microphones are unevenly distributed. They are concentrated in places where black and Latino families live and are not present in predominantly white neighborhoods. The implementation of ShotSpotter technology has not been informed by data, but instead by law enforcement sentiment. This surveillance is a continuance of race-based policing and treating places that black people live as hazardous or inherently less safe. Sound thinking, the maker of ShotSpotter profits from gun violence. ShotSpotter's company benefits from fear around gun violence and offers an overly simplified solution to a complex issue. We need preventative policies, not reactionary technology. While Pittsburgh is spending over $1 million a year on an AI tool that relies on the computer to make decisions for us, with algorithms that have baked into them the inherent bias of the tool's creators, other cities such as Charlotte, North Carolina, San Antonio, Texas, and most recently Chicago have ended their ShotSpotter contracts citing racial bias in the deployment of the technology. Communities with the highest rates of gun violence deserve more tangible support than investments in surveillance technology that does not prevent or reduce violence. Please consider investing in youth programs, public access to mental health care, and food and shelter to better prevent gun violence, or fund gun control policies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan Strickland.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Strickland. I'm a software engineer and I live in Oakland. I'm calling in because I'm concerned about the renewal of the ShotSpotter contract. I'm asking the council to join cities like Atlanta, Charlotte, North Carolina, New Orleans, San Antonio, Texas, and most recently Chicago in discontinuing this contract. There's been much discussion about the lack of transparency surrounding ShotSpotter. The exact locations of the centers deployed are kept a secret not only from the public, but also from the police departments that have purchased the contract. And this is a problem. There's no way to tell whether or not the ShotSpotter locations are disproportionately represented within communities of color when you're entering into a contract. However, as you may know, in February 2024, we found out a bit more about this. There was a leaked document exposing the location of over 25,580 gunshot detection microphones, and we found that these spirits were confirmed. An analysis of the leaked document published by Wired shows that, for example, in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, that is approximately 43% white, but only 13% of the residents who live in that area have at least one ShotSpotter device installed to identify as white. In Fort Myers, Florida, in comparison, roughly 19% of the population is black, but in block groups with at least one center, at least one center, approximately 41% of the population is black. So this is what has led ShotSpotter to be described as a probable cause narrator. We also know that ShotSpotter alerts rarely produce any evidence of gun-related crimes. The 2021 report from the Chicago Office of the Inspector General found that in Chicago, only 9% of ShotSpotter alerts were actually gun-related crimes. From the same report, we saw that there were more than 2,400 stop and frisks tied to ShotSpotter alerts. In Houston, less than 5% of the 4,395 alerts between 2020 and 2022 resulted in an arrest. Studies show that ShotSpotter is ineffective at what it claims to do, but meanwhile, sound thinking, the company behind ShotSpotter has never released any detailed data or peer reviewed analysis. If your goal is to serve and protect, I firmly believe that the evidence available compels you to reject this contract and invest in other proven effective methods of reducing gun violence. To move forward with the contract is a betrayal to our community. So many cities have decided to transition away from their contracts. Let's see Pittsburgh join them and put this money towards supporting our community, addressing the root causes of gun violence. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jay Bird. Next speaker, we don't see Jay. Next speaker is Honey Rosenbloom.
Hello, my name is Honey Rosenbloom. I live in Wilkinsburg, and I am a software developer at Allegheny County's Department of Human Services. I'm also calling to try and convince council or plead to council to not renew the contract with ShotSpotter. It regularly sends police to neighborhoods that are predominantly black or Latino and deploys its microphones and surveillance technologies into these neighborhoods. Even though ShotSpotter has not released any detailed or peer-reviewed analysis of its efficacy itself, a study by Johns Hopkins School of Public Health found that in a longitudinal study across 68 metro counties in 17 years, ShotSpotter had failed to make a significant impact on decreasing the number of firearm homicides. And in fact, in right-to-carry, or in counties that were inside of right-to-carry states, there was actually a 21 increase in firearm homicide rates. Furthermore, a study that came out recently found that 90% of the time after surveying Chicago and the ShotSpotter sends police to places and finds no evidence of gun crimes. The biggest problem of this is that since ShotSpotter microphones are predominantly deployed in communities of color, and because ShotSpotter sends so many false negatives, giving money to ShotSpotter essentially means that we are sending more police into our most vulnerable communities for unwarranted stop and frisks and wrongful deaths. We've had countless people have their lives devastated by ShotSpotter technology, like Michael Williams, Sylvan Simmons, and Danny Ortiz, who were arrested or jailed with no evidence because of a ShotSpotter call. And a ShotSpotter alert in 2021 initiated the deployment of a Chicago police officer that ended in the death of 13-year-old boy, Adam Toledo. ShotSpotter profits off of the fear of gun violence so that it can continue to sell technology that hasn't been properly validated. The $8.5 million going into ShotSpotter could instead be reinvested in our communities to reduce the root causes of gun violence, such as supporting housing, mental health access, and other resources like jobs, youth programs, and training for our homeless and disabled, and not towards more police technology. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Please do not reinvent.
Next speaker is Matthew Sandler.
Hi, I'm Matthew Sandler. I'm a senior data scientist and machine learning software engineer. I'm also here to oppose the renewal of ShotSpotter, and I stand for you to voice my position, especially in regards to my expertise in data and data science. Firstly, ShotSpotter markets itself as this objective, machine-learning-driven technology. A lot of people are often surprised to find out that a large portion of its technology actually relies on human classification, and that really makes the decision subjective and really prone to error, and there's documented cases of it changing from time to time. Moreover, they also claim, ShotSpotter claims, that their technology reduces crime. Actually, if you go to their website, you'll see that they claim that they reduce crime 36% year-over-year. They link to a study, or rather, a press release that Pittsburgh made that claims that crime went down 36% year-over-year between 2018 and 2019. If you look at the data, you'll see that while homicides did go down, and there's lots of reasons why homicides could go down any year, you also see that shootings didn't go down. Gunfire homicides stayed the same, and they've actually stayed the same pre-ShotSpotter till now. Actually, in that year, it went up slightly, but it certainly can't go to the narrative that ShotSpotter has reduced that violence specifically. And also, I filed a write-to-know request to try to get data from ShotSpotter. They fought tooth and nail to keep that data a secret. In the contracts that we have with ShotSpotter, they claim to meet a certain level of efficacy, efficacy which you've heard from my previous, the people who talked previously, they're not meeting, and they won't provide it. And Chief Strangkeki, when interviewed, said that they don't provide it to Pittsburgh. And so if they're not providing efficacy data, like, you have to question why. Why not be transparent about this? If their product really works, then they would advertise it and shout it from the rooftops. So in conclusion, I think that you shouldn't renew, but if you are going to renew, like, at least ask them for transparency, and at least ask them, to give them the efficacy data so that you can see, that you can share it with your constituents. I mean, I think that's the least that we can do. Otherwise, I think it's pretty suspect, and I think that their data is fairly unreliable. Thank you. That's my time, and yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bailey Brown.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Bailey Brown, presently of Etna Borough, formerly of Lawrenceville, and doubtless soon to be a city resident again soon. Also work in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm here to also ask you to please vote no on the ShotSpotter contract. It seems clear at this point that the technology does not work, does not help us, and frankly, there are better uses of $8 million a year, plus $100,000, namely, in my opinion, just as one suggestion, helping house our homeless population. Others have covered the bases pretty well, in my opinion. I'm grateful for the testimony before me and after me. I am concerned with the number of false alarms caused by the technology, and, pardon me. Oh, I am also concerned by the reclassification discretion that ShotSpotter has afforded to police departments, such as reclassifying helicopter noise as a gunfire noise. In a 2016 trial, a ShotSpotter expert admitted that such changes occur, quote, "all the time because we trust our law enforcement customers to be really upfront and honest with us." And I'm sorry, but I can't stand by that. I hope that you'll vote no and discuss other constructive uses for this money. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Bonnie Fan.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Fan. I work in the city of Pittsburgh and represent the Justice Coroner with the Green House, and I'm also a part of the Against Personal Tech, a group. And like many others before me, I'm calling concerned that council is moving to renew and also expound the existing contract with ShotSpotter, which was quietly renewed in 2018, the Italian, the Italian, the police violence. As the Georgia Justice Center details for the violence that reveals the locations of ShotSpotter, ShotSpotter is deployed very regularly, and especially in Pittsburgh, which overlies quite squarely in Pittsburgh's historic redlining map. This creates an interest created in the in which police are sent to the same locations, but also with the mindset of responding to violent crime, which the encounters with the residents of those locations, and it's resulted in many, in many other cities, more frequent pat downs and stops, essentially needing for stop and frisk policies by police. These centers, like many others have said, are not only known to the residents of Pittsburgh, the fact that there are microphones listening to the land and, again, placed unequally in neighborhoods. As others have spoken to this system, it looks through a flawed reclassification system that is subject to police discussion, also subject to prosecutor discussion in court views, and has already been cited in the wrongful conviction. A grandfather who's helping to respond to a contract incident was convicted solely on ShotSpotter evidence. Overall, the, many other cities have chosen, elected to not continue with this technology, and that money instead could be allocated through a process that's decided by residents who live in those communities where ShotSpotter is fully deployed. Overall, again, as many others have said before, it's concerning that we have no knowledge of how these millions of dollars have been spent or intended to be spent in the future in terms of the.
Thank you. Bonnie, although we heard a lot of what you said, there was some significant feedback. So if you would also like to, if you would care to do so, you can also share some of your comments via email to our city clerk and city council members as well. Wanted to invite you to do that as well, so that we can understand everything that you were saying. All right. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
My name is Javon F. Brown. I've been bringing this bag a couple days, and I forgot to tell you what it's from. When I went to Jamaica, they no longer allow them to have plastic bags, and they sell these for like two cent. But Jamaica is kind of poor, so a lot of the people couldn't afford this, and they actually put them in their food in boxes. When I came back from Jamaica, I had got a whole bunch of these, so I took them to the seniors, to the women, and I was saying that you can carry this bag, which was very, I mean, which they thought I spent some money, but only two cent. Two cent, and here in the United States, these bags that they're getting, you, some of you should be able to do something. The bags are, you got to pay for them, and then they break. That's the paper bags. If some kind of way we could have where someone could make these bags for like two cent apiece, we could all have them. And I'm just telling you things that you possibly hadn't thought about. Also, the shots, what they're talking about now, I think it should be disband, and you should get in touch with One Hood. Now, One Hood was where you actually have the people coming in the neighborhood and talking to them young people. My daughter was living in Elmore Square, and I remember the one fella died, I can't think of his name, but he would actually come, and them young boys, even gang members, would stop and listen. Now, maybe they didn't pay any attention, but they would actually give them that much respect because they are from their neighborhood. Even me, I know when I used to go to school, what I did was, I was a Red Cross instructor, and then there was, I was off with disability, because when I left the work, I was with disability. But anyway, what I would do was go to the schools, and you'd be surprised that these children that just think that are nothing in the way you treat them, they have a lot of sense, and they give you much respect. I can remember, they had paintings, and some of these children can really paint, and I remember the white boy, and I'm saying white so you know who, what color he was, he walked past, and I was saying, "That's beautiful." And he kept walking, and then one of them kids hit him. He said, "Did you hear that's somebody's mother telling you that your picture is okay? That was a black child telling them." If we teach our children, if we give them respect, they will respect you. In the same way, I feel if you would respect the people more, you would get more respect from us. I was talking to a construction worker yesterday, and he was telling me to go across the street. Well, I was a school guard, and I said, "I know how to do this." But anyway, he found out I was coming to the city council. My time is up.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. First committee is the Finance and Law Committee, chaired by myself, and the first bill is 373.
Bill 373, Resolution authorizing the City Controller to pay annual membership dues for 2024 to the Community Foundation for the Alleghenies for the Connect program at a cost not to exceed $6,891.
Motion to approve.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 373, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 374.
Bill 374, Resolution providing for professional services agreement or agreements or existing agreements for consulting services, but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's office at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
So I will be asking someone to make a motion to amend by substitution the amendment that you have in front of you, that our budget director worked on with the Controller's office.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? This is really just technical amendments to ensure that we're accounting for everything properly and doing it, introducing bills separately, as they need to be, to pay for this cost.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of Bill, the amendment by substitution for Bill 374, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Amendment is approved, and now we move on to Bill as amended. All those in favor of Bill 374 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill 366, Resolution amending Resolution 686 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with ShotSpotter Inc., doing business as SST Inc., for the continuation and expansion of the city's gunshot detection system by updating the vendor name and increasing the approved amount by $132,932 for an amended total cost not to exceed $8,481,204 over eight years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Second with discussion?
Yes. I'd like to call Public Safety to the table if we could. You know the rule, you know, introduce yourselves, right?
Yes. Larry Scarrato, Chief of Police.
Daniel Shack, Manager of the Office of Public Safety Technology.
Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I just want to start with a few things for clarification purposes that I heard some speakers address. This, this contract is not up for renewal until... This, this contract is not up for renewal until next year, I believe. Maybe two years, is that right?
Correct. 12/31 of 2025, so.
Twenty-five, okay. So, so yeah, we're still a little over a year away. So I think members, or some of the speakers, thought that we were voting on this actual contract today, which we're not. However, we are voting on expanding it into Carrick, which is, I believe, an additional hundred some thousand dollars.
Yes, over the next two years, this, that would cover this year's, the expansion this year's service fees and next year's service fees.
Gotcha. So, and some people were under the impression it was $8 million a year, which we know that is incorrect.
Correct.
I believe it's a million two a year. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, so the, the expansion for the one square mile into Carrick would be additional $132,000. We have a kind of a 18-square-mile deployment currently that breaks down to the approximately 1.2 per year.
Got it. So the other thing I heard was that it doesn't reduce gun violence. I don't think we've ever made that claim, correct, as to ShotSpotter? It's never been a tool to implement to reduce gun violence.
No, I think it's, no one suggests that that singular alone will reduce gun violence, but I think it most certainly impacts our response to gun violence, and the timeliness in which we respond, the ability to apprehend people while we respond, most importantly, the ability to save lives in this response, and, and that provides clear data that has improved this, well, the health and safety of our citizens by providing timely information, location to gunfire, specifically gun violence.
Right, Chief. And just, we had this conversation in private, but, you know, I want the public to know exactly how you feel about ShotSpotter.
I am absolute supporter of the technology for several reasons. One that, as I just stated, it provides timely response to victims of gun violence in our community. Additionally, it provides accuracy in the level of response. Prior to the technology, when we would rely typically on 911 calls for service to respond to a gunshot, it's someone in their home that hears gunfire. They're providing general locations about where the gunfire may or may not have occurred. So our officers are responding to areas where the ShotSpotter technology gives us a defined, a much more defined location with, with a great degree of accuracy. So our officers are responding to the victim of where they're most likely at versus being in a neighborhood, and just the ability to provide care in that immediate aftermath of gunfire, the ability to respond safely for our officers so they have an idea, a clear idea of where the gunfire came from. So in the response, they're able to apprehend suspects, recover evidence, but more importantly, approach safely, and otherwise, without this technology, they cannot do that.
Right. And Chief, the accuracy of it, I heard that being questioned. You tell me it's ninety plus, 98% accurate, correct? As to, as to when we get alerted from ShotSpotter, that it's, it's a firearm going off, that is very accurate.
Yes, that, the notifications that are sent to police is very accurate, yes.
Maybe different cities, other cities are different, you know? Maybe Pittsburgh being smaller than Chicago or Atlanta, maybe they have more false alarms?
I don't know if they have more false alarms. I don't believe they, it's oftentimes very difficult to determine what other cities' policies demand of their officers when they respond. So we demand the collection of evidence. We demand that we treat the shot activation as, as a legitimate incident, and in that, we recover evidence, whether it's the mag, the casing from the fire, from the bullet, right? And that we're using our collective NIBIN comparisons to, to do crime link analysis from a single gunshot. A lot of other organizations don't demand that of their officers and aren't recovering the necessary evidence from these, so they treat them as, as if they were, they were nonexistent and/or false. And for us, we don't treat those activations in the same way. So we are able to gather and garner much more meaningful evidence from them when they occur.
Right. And to your point, gunshots in front of my house, a couple of years ago, I was one that called, several neighbors called. We didn't, we don't have ShotSpotter where I live at the current time, and we're not projected to get it. I had my ideas for where the fire, where the shots were fired from. Four different neighbors had four different, oh, came from over here, came from over there. ShotSpotter narrows it down to a, how many square footage area, or, you know, you know what I mean? So, so we're looking at, these shots were fired right in front of my house, we went later, found out. But we had four different locations from four different neighbors as to where they thought the shots came from, because you may think it came from here, but, you know, just depending on, you know.
Right, right. So it is within 25 square feet, so that is.
Within 25 square feet, yeah.
That's significant. That's significant as it relates to accuracy of reporting, especially when you're receiving multiple calls for it, if in fact you receive any calls for it.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah, because we know oftentimes shots are fired and nobody calls. They might think it was a car backfiring or, but ShotSpotter can tell the difference between a car backfiring or a firework as to a gunshot.
That is correct.
Right? And so when ShotSpotter calls you from Chicago, I guess that's where we get our information from, it's reliable that it was a firearm.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Very good.
Think just elaborate on a few points.
Sure, please, Dan, please.
So, you know, in the calendar years 2022 and 2023, there were 4,065 incidents out of 4,563 shots fired incidents in the ShotSpotter footprint, which is 90%, that there were not an associated 911 call. So only 10% of the time, you're actually getting an associated 911 call of these incidents and where they are.
Good. All right. So it's safe to say, I know you believe in it, Chief, Dan and Director also have the utmost confidence in ShotSpotter?
Absolutely. I think, looking at the, you know, the number of victims that we're getting, so, you know, 2022 and 2023, there were 163 victims that, you know, ShotSpotter had led us to, where the victims were treated, you know, life-saving care was provided by, you know, either police on scene first, securing the scene, getting EMS in, you know, for a 94.5% survival rate of gunshot victims that were located by ShotSpotter.
Yeah, applying a tourniquet to somebody who's bleeding out on a sidewalk is a difference between life and death in many cases that minute. Let me ask you this, is, what would be the difference between, say, my neighborhood, it doesn't have ShotSpotter, somebody just traditionally called, and getting the ShotSpotter alert from Chicago? Is, can you, can you put a timeframe on it? Is it two minutes difference? Is it a minute difference? How much quicker are we there for ShotSpotter versus a traditional phone call?
So we increased our response time by 67%. It would, it would, so in seconds, 177 seconds from a traditional 911, or from ShotSpotter, would be 177 seconds, traditional 911 calls, 262 seconds.
Mm-hmm.
So the 67, it, time matters. Time matters when we're talking about saving lives. And in that, the data matters to support these decisions that make me stand behind. It's not based on my feelings personally, it's based on my knowledge of how the technology works.
Right, right.
To the point you made earlier, and others have stated, the prior response was multiple 911 calls, or even now, it's 911 calls that gives us a multi-block radius to search for a victim. Now it gives us a very small radius to find a victim versus searching, using resources, whether that's police, fire, EMS, or a combination of them all. We also use this data to share with our violence outreach teams and work that strategy around as we see increased shots fired in the neighborhood. We know we may need to provide some more resources in those neighborhoods of our violence outreach teams, our violence interrupters. They've asked for that information. So this is not solely for police. This provides data and information for our medics to know where to respond, how to respond, where communities are likely to have an increase, as well as our preventative measures, to build those strategies about where we are, what communities, even which blocks, you know, to focus some services in.
And as I was saying about the incident in front of my house, if there's no shots, ShotSpotter cuts you down to 25-foot square radius, you don't really need to talk to neighbors to see where that shot came from. Or in my case, again, you were getting four different opinions, and you find yourself knocking on doors, trying to figure out where the actual shot came from.
Yes.
Where ShotSpotter was like, no, it came from here.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. And I think it's always important to associate like real lives that are impacted. Our first potential homicide of 2024 is a 17-year-old kid in the Hill District that shot multiple times, one in the head, that does not, it's a ShotSpotter notification, does not have a corresponding 911 call from a resident. So if we did not have the technology in place, I'm certain, the medical team's certain, everybody's certain, that that young man would have perished from his injuries relative to gunfire. And, and that's what, how, and how we know this stuff matters, because it affects real lives in real time, and it gives us the ability to save real lives in real time.
Right. Because a minute is a matter of life and death.
We may have never found him, but we have found him, it happened in the middle of the night.
Got it, right.
So we're going to find him the following morning, and, and like we know, that we know what the results would have been had this not, and had we not had the technology.
Yep. I'll tell you, Carrick, which we're expanding into, I was reluctant. I didn't, you know, none of us really want to have to have this technology, but, you know, I kind of take your lead on it, you're the professionals, and you've convinced me that you think the technology is good. Dan, you think, you, you all three are fully confident in the technology, the accuracy of it, and everything else comes along with it.
Yeah. And again, another, an instance, real-life instance in your neighborhood. We had a missing, missing military vet that was suicidal. He had taken his significant other's firearm, left a note that he was going to end his life. He went to McKinley Trails, and it was a single gunshot to the head, and no response, no community call, and it would be where your footprint is of this technology. And, and in that, there may have been a police response, a medical response, that could have saved his life. Otherwise, we found him at seven in the morning by a walker five feet off the trail.
Right, right. I guess it's impossible to claim it saves, has saved lives, but I agree with you, it surely has, just in response times, you know, for a victim.
Absolutely.
There's no question about it. You can't claim that it saves lives though, actually, because, you know, I mean, obviously us getting there in, in an amount of time to save that life is proof enough for me, I will tell you, the, the minute or two minutes that you save by getting, being alerted by ShotSpotter. So again, I was reluctant to have it in my neighborhood. I think the neighborhood, you know, changed my mind, they want it because they feel they need it, at least in the Carrick section. There's been some talk about the data, as to like our access to the data. Can you tell me anything about that?
Yeah, so I think ShotSpotter by their own corporate policies are very strict with what data we can receive, what data we can share. And some of that is to ensure safety of someone not taking advantage of the information they gather. I mean, I absolutely trust our police department, and it's all about how it's applied, but there is definitely, the data they collect, the information, the audio they collect can be.
But you have full access to our police.
We have access for what is appropriate for the police to have access to. So our police don't have full access to the recordings or the audio, they only get the audio that ShotSpotter deems necessary to share with us. And some of the other data we do have full access to, and we are, and I know the, some folks have asked for a little bit more for the Controller's Office to do the audit, and we are working with the Controller's Office on that to see what we can provide, how we can share that to, because we do want to make sure that this is a effective, efficient system, and it is a good use of dollars. That is something we're hoping in Carrick will be, as this expands out, that'll be a good example of what wasn't there versus when it is there, how we can compare those shots as we make that analysis over the next year and a half to where the next new contract, or when this contract comes up for renewal, we can make a better, well-informed decision as to how we proceed with the future of ShotSpotter in the city of Pittsburgh.
So, so the extension into Carrick will be more transparent, will have more access to the data? Is that what you're saying?
We have, we're working with them to see what data we can get. Like I said, the Controller's Office has asked for access to some stuff, we have to go to ShotSpotter and work out with them. But we also want to be careful, because people can use data for nefarious reasons, and we want to ensure that the data is well properly utilized, so.
No, understood. So, okay, well, I, I look forward to seeing it in Carrick. I'm happy to hear that you're all confident in it. That gives me the confidence in it, I will tell you. So with that, that's it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I'm very supportive, so I'll be very brief. I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that I heard coming in under the public testimony. And one, it was suggested that ShotSpotter was sort of discriminatory towards communities of color, because that's where it was majority deployed. And others also suggested to take these dollars and go meet with the residents there to determine how to better spend them. And I just want to remind those who called in, as well as those who may not be aware, that it was initially communities of color, currently represented by Councilman Mosley, that actually requested this technology to come into their community. And it was majority communities of color who then asked for it to be expanded across our city into additional neighborhoods. So those conversations have been ongoing for many, many years, and they have been supportive in asking for this technology and for this service. Two, and no one's going to be able to answer this, but to those who say there's a better way to spend this, these dollars, I would simply ask them, what is a life worth? If in, from 2022 to 2023, 163 lives were saved, is that worth 1.2 million dollars? I would say yes. I would actually say I'd be willing to spend even more than that to save those lives, but at a minimal, that is worth it to me. And for those who don't think so, I would ask them what they view the value of a life to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. So thanks for coming to the table, and I know that we talked about this in a briefing, so I just wanted to raise again, I can tell from some of your comments, you know, a little homework since our briefing, so you have a little bit more information since then. I do want to say, so in 2019, I believe, there was a Justice Tech Lab, I'm not sure what that is, a report, and it compared like 40 cities and the different ShotSpotter data that was available from these 40 cities. In Pittsburgh, the data was very limited, date, time range, latitude, longitude, incident type, and then some acronyms, which I'm not sure. Just for one comparison, Detroit's data was incident date, location, time recorded, time dispatched, arrival time, response time from time recorded, evidence collected, arrest, whether or not there was an arrest, whether or not there was a person injured, you know, except, right, like a number of data points. And I think that's what folks are, this is the type of information that we want to see, right? When, if we are going to renew this ShotSpotter contract in two years, and this is what I was saying in our briefing, or I guess like a year and a half, is, you know, here we have a really excellent opportunity with the Carrick situation, where we have a place that does not have ShotSpotter, and a place where we are proposing to have the ShotSpotter, where we can actually, because we, we have no data, like, I mean, we have no data to compare before ShotSpotter, because we weren't collecting that type of data before ShotSpotter, right? So we just have years of ShotSpotter, but nothing to compare it to. Just to confirm, these 163, when you say the 163 incidences where you, it was a ShotSpotter notification with no 911?
So there were 163 incidents of the ShotSpotter out of the 4,563 incidents where a injured victim suffering a gunshot wound was found, was treated, and was survived.
And there was no 911 for any of those? 163?
The 163 were part of the overall. Out of that data, we do not have exactly ready at this point, but we could put together to determine what 10% of those that did have the 911 call were an associated victim.
No, that's, so, so again, see, you see what I mean, like, we don't have the, so right here, you say there's 163 lives that were saved between 2022 and 2023.
Correct.
But we don't know if there were 911 calls for those.
We had the data, I just don't have it readily available with me at the table right now.
Right, but these are the types, and this is where we're getting into the controller wanting to, you know what I mean? These are the, because if there were 911 calls for all of these, right, you see what I mean? Then we don't know if the ShotSpotter was the reason that we were able to save these 163 lives. So that's what this data is about, right? That's what digging in, like, when you're looking at these things, you know, just for the Detroit example, you know, was evidence collected, like casing shells, bullets, firearm? Was there, was there somebody who was injured? Was there nobody found, like, you know? Uh, was there nobody found, like, you know, was there an arrest made, right? Like, what is the data connected to the ShotSpotter incident? And that's, that is what we need to look at. Um, so, and again, I'm a little unclear as well on like what data is available and what is not, like, why there's, I, I don't understand about there being like proprietary data that ShotSpotter can't share with us. I understand not making it public, but that there would be really any data that we wouldn't be able to access in order to evaluate the efficacy of the program ourselves, at, at the very least internally, like with our own city controller, right? Um, and I think, you know, again, there are lots of questions, you know, what's the impact on response time? Uh, you know, verification of shots fired versus evidence. Um, now I know that you did have an anecdotal, you know, want, so, and I, and I have heard some anecdotes, right? Like I've, we, we heard the story of the young man who was, um, shot in his car and there was no nine-one-one and we found that person, right? So that is one anecdote. And again, now we do have one in Carrick, so there was a, a gentleman who took a firearm, left a note and went out, right? And, you know, perhaps we would have been able to get to him in time. Um, but it would be good to know, so in Carrick, we could use this as an opportunity, right? How many, how, like, if we had, since, since this contract isn't getting renewed and, you know, I, I have not counted votes, but I'm assuming that this, I'm not going to vote to expand it to Carrick, but I assume that my colleagues will. Um, can we use this before and after, right? So we have last year Carrick, no ShotSpotter, right? And then we'll have this year Carrick with ShotSpotter. And we, we will literally have, uh, uh, you know, apples to apples. But we can't do it without, without the data. And we can't do it without ShotSpotter giving us the data that we need. So, I mean, my initial desire was to hold this so that we can figure out what we need from ShotSpotter, right? It's not just between you and the controller, but it's actually between public safety, the controller and ShotSpotter, right? What data can we get? Um, so I, you know, well, I'll let you respond. I, I will say my, my inclination is to have some type of a post-agenda, get shot, because it's, it's, it's very unclear to me why we don't have all of this information already, to be honest with you.
So I think we have a, a few things. Um, ShotSpotter provides us with kind of what you said, the location, date, time. ShotSpotter doesn't know, nor does it record whether we found a victim, whether we arrested someone, what evidence we found. That's in our me- records management system, which we have just switched from one system to another. The system we had in place was created for the city by B three back in two thousand four. The new system we have is now, holds much more data, collects more data, and we can customize what we're looking for. So around these ShotSpotter calls, we can start to get a form or, uh, information that we want to collect and when we can have the officers that respond to those calls to ensure we're checking that and getting that information so we can provide better reporting. And to your point, Carrick is now a good opportunity for that because we now have the new RMS system up and running, thanks to the chief and his team. We have a modern records management system that's collecting much more data, that's Neibers compliant, that follows national best practices, as well as now a new section where ShotSpotter's at, that we can, that currently doesn't have it. So that's ours zero, right, or to then be able to compare over the next year, that data. As far as getting, to my knowledge, it, we have not had an issue with ShotSpotter giving us data we've requested for the, any of those purposes. It's just whether they collect it or not. Um, and most of that's on us to collect, whether we find a patient, whether we find evidence, all that. It's just we don't, at the time, and prior to November, we did not have a records management system that allowed us to easily collect and tick those boxes, so to speak, to then flag for an easy, good data analysis.
But to your, I'm sorry, but to your.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
To your, so the nineteen report, now I'm not sure how that was gleaned and what data was truly requested and/or provided from the bureau. But all the boxes you spoke to with Detroit, we accurately account for today, right? So when my team says ShotSpotter activations yielded one hundred and fifty-four gun arrests, that's truly from just the activation and not from a nine-one-one call for service. When we recovered evidence seven hundred and sixty-seven times, that's truly from the shock call notification and not from a corresponding nine-one-one call. So there, there is your response to like some of the other things that I know you've asked of them. And that's where we're continuing to look at, is to ensure that we can isolate what ShotSpotter does on its own, uh, versus and in conjunction with what our community engagement, our calls for service look like in comparison to. So we have the ability to do that. We do do that now. Uh, and as we move forward, we'll continue to collect that data utilizing Carrick and currently the places in which we sit today to support other, i- i- if it didn't work, then I stand in front of you the next time and say, we don't support it anymore. It's, it's, that data doesn't say that it does what we believe it did do. But in the moment, based on all of the information and data we do have available to us, and I believe it to be credible, I stand in support and say as it works.
Um, I do also want to just, because I have it in front of me. So in the same study for, in Louisville, um, they referenced something called the investigator portal, the ShotSpotter investigator portal. Is that something that we have access to?
We do not utilize that in a way that they utilize it. They utilize it to generate probable cause, and we have not done that.
Well, so, but my, so we do have it, because my understanding is that this is something where you can do, um, basically custom reports, right, that all the data's in there. And use, I mean, users who have access to the portal can run custom reports on any number of scenarios with the data.
Our crime analysis unit could do that. Our field officers could not do that.
Well, maybe not, but I'm just saying, when we're talking about the controller and doing an audit, right? So, so we do, so we do have this portal that we can use to sort of slice and dice the ShotSpotter data as we need to, to answer the questions that we want to.
We have access to a product called Insight. Insight allows us to generate, you know, and that's where a lot of the data that we provided to you comes from. Um, you know, how, the activations, how many ShotSpotters there were versus nine-one-one calls. And then looking at those individual responses to determine, here's how many guns were recovered, here's how many arrests were made. Um, you know, here's how many lives were saved by putting all that together. Um, to elaborate on a point that the director made, you know, now that we have the new RMS in place, we have a checkbox in there now that tells, you know, officers anytime that a tourniquet was applied. So we'll be able to, you know, take that data and determine, you know, how many, you know, how many times was there an officer that provided lifesaving care to a victim ahead of EMS becoming on scene? So we are, you know, expanding our data with the new RMS and adding additional points to be able to kind of bring forth those points in these discussions.
Okay. And, and, and ju- just to work clear, so you will also be collecting when there wasn't a nine-one-one call?
Yes.
Okay. So when we are like, because.
We collect that now. So that's, that information's available today. But that's not something we have to go reproduce or ask the vendor or Allegheny County EOC to reproduce for us. We have the act ability today with our current CAD and RMS system to extract that information.
All right. Well, I'll, I mean, I will, um, I'll leave it at that. I may call for a post-agenda later to see, you know, wait a bit to see where we are. I'd like to hear more from the controller about the data she needs to see in order to do the audit. Um, but yeah, I'll leave it at that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. I have a, 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 a number of, of questions. Um, my, my first question, um, comes from a follow-up, you know, um, from, from our briefing. If you could, um, you know, just i- i- to your, uh, ability to find specificity, um, run, run again, um, you know, the percentage or the number of alerts um, that you receive from Spotshotter, um, that, that don't come with a corresponding, you know, nine-one-one call. Um, you know, do you have a sense of, of what that, uh, what that number is or the percentage of, of Spotshotter alerts that you get that don't, uh, come with a corresponding nine-one-one call?
Indeed. So in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, um, there were a total of four thousand five hundred and sixty-three ShotSpotter activations in the eighteen square mile, you know, coverage area that we currently have. Um, four thousand sixty-five of those, um, were ShotSpotter notifications. Um, so a total of ninety percent of the calls do not have a corresponding nine-one-one call.
Okay.
So only ten percent of the time, we have a corresponding nine-one-one call with a ShotSpotter alert.
Okay, okay. Um, and, and I, and I don't know if you were able to pull this together, but, you know, during, during our briefing, um, I asked if, if it was possible, uh, for us to kind of have a side-by-side comparison of, of data comparing, um, gunshot victim casualties pre, um, uh, Spotshotter and post-Spotshotter. I know the program has expanded, so depending on the year you look at, it's kind of, you know, apples and oranges from kind of the original footprint, um, you know, was, when it was first implemented. But, you know, is there, you know, just a sense of, you know, a side-by-side comparison of, you know, before, um, Spotshotter was implemented, you know, the type of, you know, uh, casualties we would get from gunshots, potentially people bleeding out over the course of hours or found the next day versus, um, you know, that. And if you don't have it now, would definitely, I think that would be helpful, um, you know, to, to, to understand.
Yeah. I mean, there's a, so that one we have looked at, it's a little challenging, I mean, for good reasons. But in the fact that when ShotSpotter was originally implemented, um, our officers did not carry tourniquets or stop the bleeding equipment. Our medics carried different equipment and our firefighters didn't respond to, uh, ShotSpotter calls like they do now. So if there's a victim firing EMS go, originally it was only EMS. Our EMS does a great job. There's a ninety-eight percent survival rate for anyone with a torso or extremity injury. Um, but we definitely equate some of that and give credit to our officers because of the fact that they now have tourniquets. So there's a lot of variables that would impact those results other than trying to find where in time there was a victim that we never got a call for, for hours later. Um, but even that, as we talked earlier, our prior records management system was very much narrative-based. So it was not great to pull data from in an easy way. It pretty much required folks manually flipping through and reading narratives to pull out the information we're looking at. So it was very time-intensive to, to get that, but we are trying to work um, to figure out the best way to collect data, even historical, that is a little more challenging to provide some good comparisons and, uh, good data-informed decisions on this.
Thank you. And, and so is, it, was that change in, in policy as far as, uh, the type of equipment and, and, and the type of services provided by the whole range of, of our, of our first responders? Is that somehow tied to Spotshotter or was that just, you know, just a general change in policy in the type of emergency services?
Yeah, that was just a, a general change, um, because they, they'll do that no matter what.
Okay.
It's just ShotSpotter does provide, you know, that tool for them to get to the victim quicker. So we want to make sure when our officers come across a victim, they're always the first ones on scene, or typically. The first ones on scene want to make sure they have the tools to provide immediate first aid until our advanced providers, our firefighters, medics arrive to provide a little bit longer-term care until they can get them to the hospital.
Right. Yeah. And, 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 um, and you alluded to, um, you know, some restrictions as far as certain data um, that Shot, you know, Spotter, um, you know, doesn't provide. Can you speak to the nature, um, of what, um, the data that is restricted that, you know, um, you know, uh, we, we can't get, I, I do find that, you know, you know, somewhat, you know, concerning. Um, as, as someone who's paying, you know, this vendor, um, you know, could, so can you just speak, you know, you know, for the public to like what type of data information that, that ShotSpotter, um, you know, cannot or, you know, for, you know, and what, what, what kind of restricted information exists right now?
So ShotSpotter provides us a ton of data monthly. They, you know, they provide us a, you know, kind of a scorecard of, you know, where we are, how many incidents there are, what the, the percentage is, what the timeframe is, that, you know, they get those to us. They provide us reports that is, you know, the director said that we pass along to, you know, some of the Stop the Violence and some of our, you know, other partners, um, is, you know, the number of shots fired incidents in relation to schools, um, you know, in relation to, you know, critical infrastructure facilities. Um, so they are very good with a lot of that data. Some of the things that, that they do not provide are locations of sensors. So, you know, there are, you know, most of the sensors are mounted on telephone poles, mounted on, you know, publicly available buildings. But there are times where they go into neighborhoods and they may work with residents to place a sensor, um, you know, on a residence. So it's part of the confidentiality with those residents, you know, and protecting their, you know, houses so that, you know, there is not, you know, any type of retaliatory events towards their houses that they participate in this program. Um, that's something that they don't share with us or, you know, in a right-to-know request. Um, some of the other things that, you know, are not shared is there's kind of a perception that, you know, ShotSpotter are microphones and constantly listening to, you know, everybody in the public. So there are acoustic sensors that take bang booms and pops, um, that run them through a machine algorithm and then followed up with human interaction to pass along those gunfire incidents. So we, as the city, do not have unvetted access to those sensors to sit there to say, hey, you know, here's exactly, you know, how many bang booms and pops came from the sensor at one-two-three Main Street. Um, so it's, it's sort of things that, you know, the, the sensors, you know, we don't really need access to be able to do that. If we have per se an incident where we think that it was a missed incident or it was, you know, an incident that occurred within a car and it may have been muffled, we could follow up with, uh, you know, a request and says, hey, there was a shooting at one-two-three Main Street within the, you know, proximity of the ShotSpotter footprint. Um, and we are requesting a follow-up from you, um, to determine if that incident was captured on the system and just not pa- you know, passed along to us. Um, so there, there is a lot of data that is passed along that is very good and allows us to compile the reports that we do compile and that, you know, we do work internally to share. Um, and that, you know, some of the, the large things that aren't shared are those two examples that really kind of give you an, an idea of those.
Right, right.
Sorry, just to follow up a little bit. And some of the data that is shared with us, we have available to us internally and, but it's a matter of what can be made public. So if the controller's office does an audit, we have to make sure, we don't want to put a residence or even a business that is willing to work with us and put a sensor up. We want to make sure that information doesn't get put public. And as you, we all know, there, I mean, for good reasons, there's a transparency process around right-to-know, et cetera. Um, some of that ShotSpotter maintains those rights. So then we have to get their permission before we can share that. And we make sure we vet it and, um, redact appropriate information. But by all means, we're all for sharing everything we can that makes sense for everyone to feel comfortable and for folks to understand how this technology works for us here in the city.
Right. And, and, and obviously we've, you know, heard, um, in the news and, and around the table about, uh, you know, certain cities, um, you know, that have decided to no longer, you know, uh, u- use this technology. Are you aware, um, being part of, of this network, that, that many cities use this tool of cities that, um, that much like yourselves are singing, uh, the praises of ShotSpotter, you know, and speak, um, you know, with, with confidence about it, um, that we could potentially look at and do some reading about? Because obviously we hear a lot about Chicago and Charlotte and some of the other cities that have pulled away from this technology. Are you familiar with, you know, other cities, um, li- like yourselves that, you know, have, still have confidence in this technology?
I mean, I'll ask the chief, I know he can speak a little bit more on this. I, I think just like any technology, it's how you utilize it and that you're making sure you're utilizing in a manner that is fair, equitable, and for the purpose and intention that it was made for. Anyone that has available use of a variety of technologies can use it for reasons that may be a little more extreme or inappropriate or unethical. So we have some pretty strict guidelines on any technology we use within public safety and especially in the police to ensure, um, that comfortability. And I know chief speaks a little more about that compared to some of the other cities that have used it for other things.
Yeah. So we, we, we speak to our peer cities consistently about technology, more importantly, how it's applied. Uh, there is a city that obviously doesn't use it anymore. And they reference a, a specific case in which the investigators used the information gleaned from the notification as probable cause to make an arrest on homicide. It obviously turned out to be inaccurate, uh, and a man spent a fair amount of time in prison on false charges because the detectives short-cutted the process, uh, and used information inappropriately to further support their case. Uh, we are certain that's not the way in which we use this technology I talked about. But there has to be some confidence in the leadership that you place in me and/or whoever sits in this seat, that the policies that, which we pummelate upon our organization are ethical, constitutional, and, and abide by all laws within this common. pummelate upon our organization are ethical, constitutional, and abide by all laws within this Commonwealth. And when you do that, that you have to have trust and faith that we won't hijack the system for nefarious means. And that's the way in which we sit today. We don't use it as a matter of probable cause. We use it as a matter of safety and information. And it hasn't, in any instance that I can recall, taken us into someone's home and been the subject or the body of information for a search warrant and or physical arrest of any of our citizens. So the, again, I think the case in which the city that separated with that contract uses so much wasn't a result or failure in the technology, it would result in failure of policy and oversight in which the manner their personnel use it. And I think it's really important to discern the difference.
Thank you for that. I think, I think part of, you know, the disconnect and, you know, as far as how I've always understood SpotShot and how I think a lot of the residents look at SpotShot is that, you know, I think it's perceived, you know, as a crime prevention tool, you know, as a violence prevention tool and, you know, through the briefings as well as, you know, more information that I'm getting, you know, in many ways, it's more of an emergency services tool as well as an investigative tool, you know, after the fact, you know. So I think, you know, I do agree with Councilman Warwick that I do think we need, you know, some further discussions so residents, you know, across the city, you know, can understand, you know, what this tool is. I think some of the pushback that you receive, you know, is based on folks understanding that this is a tool that prevents gun violence as opposed to, you know, a tool that allows you to respond more expeditiously to gun violence as well as more expeditiously investigate, you know, gun crimes, you know, when it happens, you know, after the fact. And I think that's going to be, you know, an important, you know, discussion that we have. And I'm prepared, you know, to support this on behalf of the residents of Carrick at this time. But I, you know, would like to see more robust conversation, you know, and and exploration as we look at, you know, the long term, you know, extension of this program. But I really thank you, you know, for your time today and look forward to many discussions between now and 2025 as we look at potentially expanding as well as, you know, extending, you know, this contract into further years. So I yield my time back to the chair.
Thank you, Councilman. First round, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you all for being here. What's the, what's the accuracy of ShotSpotter in terms of determining whether it's a gunshot or fireworks or
So
a backfire in a car?
We receive a scorecard report from ShotSpotter on a monthly basis that shows the accuracy based upon, you know, if, like I had previously spoke to, if there's an incident, you know, inside of a car or there's something that may have been muffled and they say it, but we're, you know, anywhere between the ninety two to ninety six percent on a monthly basis of the accuracy of the technology.
So ninety two to ninety six percent. So let me understand. So what happens in that, you know, and then eight to, and then four to eight percent?
So I think the four to eight percent would be kind of, you know, an incident that they call a missed incident that would go back for reclassification. So something after it goes through the machine algorithm and there's human interaction and they'll look at that. If there's something, you know, we had a, you know, a shooting not too long ago, that the shooter and the victim were within the cabinet of a car. So that is covered as, you know, within that percent. ShotSpotter, it was within the footprint, but it was not covered because of, you know, the muffled sound from the gunshots coming from
So it's like ninety, so it's that ninety percent, ninety two, ninety six percent accuracy for a gunshot, right?
Correct.
And so then what is, you know, what's the alternative? So the alternative is, like, how accurate is it to detect non-gunshots?
So the, out of the, you know, in the two year period that we gave, you know, the four thousand five hundred and sixty three alerts, those are the alerts that were passed along to us. There is probably four thousand five hundred and sixty three activations of the system a day for, you know, roofing, cars backfiring, fireworks, loud, you know, ground plates that are being placed down on the road to cover a hole that are disqualified from being passed along to us.
I remember asking this question that I'm going to get to, to my commander when I first took office, but I'll, I can't really remember the answer, so that's why I'm asking here.
Sure.
What happens in the case now, since we have ShotSpotter, that someone calls and it is for fireworks? And it's determined that it is for fire. I'm sorry, they're saying it's a gunshot, but in reality, you know, it comes back to us as fireworks or whatever it is, like non-gunfire.
The Bureau's Real Time Crime Center manages kind of the notifications of the ShotSpotter project. So from there, they would then complete the same thing as, you know, as obviously it's a false negative. And they would say, hey, the ShotSpotter activation at the corner of, you know, California and Marshall was deemed to be fireworks. And then that's reclassified in the system.
But then police still show up?
Police still show up, yes.
We will treat, so whether it's ShotSpotter or a nine one one call, we will not disregard it because of one or the other. So if a citizen called and said they believe there was gunfire and we didn't get a corresponding notification from ShotSpotter because their, their system determined it to be fireworks, we would still treat it as a shots fire call. So we don't allow one to trump the other with different importance, and we don't allow one to disregard the other.
But in the past, whenever we didn't know the difference, what happened?
We would respond to all of them like gunfire.
Meaning
So on Fourth of July.
It would be called off because it was, like, what would happen?
We will never disregard.
The police would still be on the scene for
We'd still respond. So think of the Fourth of July, we don't disregard those calls. We'd go. This gives us a fair degree of certainty with that now we have a corresponding call or a corresponding ShotSpotter notification and a nine one one call for service. So therefore, we rely on the technology to lessen some of the immediate priority responses, but we're still going to those calls. In the past, we would just go to them because you can't, you can't discredit the caller. The nine one one caller is to say that they're based on a specific day or what other factors you'd like to associate that that's not a true valid call. So we treat every shots fire call no matter the manner.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, whenever they're showing up and the police show up and now we know that it's a, you know, fireworks. Like, is the
Are you, oh, they are saying
How much time are the officers spending in the past, you know, looking for
Evidence?
Yeah, evidence or whatever happens on the scene.
I couldn't tell you the number for number, minute for minute, but I could tell you that it gives us
Is it reduced now?
It would reduce time spent looking for, right? When the call's that generic or general, they're going to respond, they're going to show the priorities of life, they'll look for injured individuals. And when that doesn't present itself, they don't look any further if it was that type of call. I think they rely, and we have become reliant on the extra verification that ShotSpotter gives us to, hey, look further. We're probably far more or less dismissive of that call when we arrive because, like, the councilman spoke to earlier, when four people called nine one one, all from different locations in a two block radius, but we don't have any clarity of where it is. So you do a general neighborhood search, that's timely, but it's not oftentimes fruitful. Now we have the ability to minimize the amount of times that we sit on calls looking for things that just would not exist.
Okay. The other question I have was, whenever it is determined that it is a gunshot and that, you know, it comes back and whether the call or not, the cameras, do the cameras turn towards that area or not?
We do not have, we have not connected the appropriate technology and more importantly, borne the expense that it would take to do that. Our Real Time Crime Center, based on what cameras we have available and accessible to us, start that process based on the shots fire call. So they do it manually.
So you all are moving the cameras based on where the triangulates?
For instance, we had the homicide on Penn Avenue. When that call comes in, whether that ended up being the false, false non notification, I guess. As soon as that call comes in, the Real Time Crime Center personnel starts utilizing the cameras available for that area to attempt to determine.
So I mean, basically, the camera, because I've been to Zone One to see how some of them move. So we're saying the camera could be looking this way. The gunfire happened over here. Someone is in the command center. Like, how soon can they turn that camera on?
They can move the camera just as quick as they're made aware of it.
Can you confirm that that's happening?
It happens on every, I'm certain.
So we have someone in the command center that is literally moving cameras from where?
If available, yes. If that camera's available, when that shots fire call comes in.
Do you find that useful?
Find it tremendously useful.
What are we arguing about here again? So they don't have data for where, so they can't provide us data where the ShotSpotter is. Correct? That's one of the things that, and that's understandable. And the other one is, there were like three things you say.
No, what they do not provide us is where the sensors are placed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was trying to cover that one. That makes sense. So the other one is, what don't they provide us with?
They don't provide us unvetted audio, you know, unvetted access to the gunshot detection. So
I don't know why we would, I mean, do you find that useful?
It is not.
We need the raw audio? Okay. What's the other thing? That are the complaints here that we don't, the data that we don't get from them?
Those are the two big ones that I could speak to.
Those are the two big ones?
Yes. Yeah. And if I could just elaborate on
Based on the questions you heard today, those are the two big questions.
Yeah, and the controller's office has reached out about this and we are working with them to figure out what that are they looking for? So then we can have a conversation about what is publicly releasable versus has to be kept in-house because it's investigative or because it could point to someone that has a sensor on their house or
So the two questions are
Privacy information.
The two, I mean, based on this, is that where the sensor is and we need the audio.
Those are the two big
That's the questions that you feel has been asked to you today on what they're not providing? Like, not what I asked, but what other members have asked.
No, I don't think it's been quite determined yet because we, I haven't had the chance to sit down with the controller to see what data they're looking for. Some of it's a matter of whether we collect the data or not. That was part of what I talked with Councilperson Warwick is we don't have, we, prior to our new current RMS system, we didn't have a great way of easily collecting whether officers used a tourniquet or not, whether they found evidence, whether there was a ShotSpotter. Again, that would have been something someone would have to sit and read through reports to see, oh, they used a tourniquet. Whereas now we can have a little tick box, they just check a box and say, we used a tourniquet. So then we can quickly pull all those reports and, you know, it's it's a data analytics thing that it, you know, a data analyst looks at just that. They look at data, not narratives, and they don't want to have to sit and read and then that starts to turn into bias and other things.
Okay.
And I don't think we, I don't think I've heard a question that we couldn't, we, the Bureau, could not answer for you, other than the two he spoke to. So I'm not certain, when you review the stat report that they send, if there are things you would like more detail on, I'm certain we can provide them. Other than, the only thing we really don't provide outwardly is proprietary information that's relative to ShotSpotter and how they operate internally.
I would be blown away if there's research papers out there that say that there's not an association with, you know, identifying where shots are coming from and that being like a positive outcome. Like, whether you measure the positive outcome, you know, with being able to stop, you know, like save someone's life, whether they're, you know, bleeding, whether there's something apprehended that otherwise, you know, we want to get. I mean, I would, I mean, it's just, I guess for me, it's hard to sit here and to think that we would contemplate, you know, getting rid of this program. Because every, every way I try and think about this, the cameras, you got someone in there, even though it'd be a lot more money to turn to cameras. I mean, it's just the impact I know that, you know, it's had, you know, in my district for several things that have happened. You know, I've, I've heard, you know, nothing but good things from the residents that, that want it. You know, things that happen in, in certain neighborhoods. And so and hearing stories of other districts, but I'm just, I would really, I mean, if someone could show me that there's not going to, they're not going to show an association, a positive correlation of positive outcomes with ShotSpotter, I'm sure, people can always punch at data whatever they want. But, you know, I'd love to see it, you know. We're talking where they're actually going to measure, you know, the P value of not some, you know, not some paper that's going to, you know, try and, you know, loosely describe something. I was talking about like a strong association of a positive outcome. And I think it's one of these things that generally, when we were talking about this, when I sat in the briefing, you showed the numbers of peoples and lives that have been saved. I think it's well worth the money. And I'm looking forward to supporting that today.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin.
Thank you. I'll be pretty brief here. I want to start off with a simple question here. Do, does anyone think that ShotSpotter is preventative? Do we have any reason to think of it as a preventative technology?
Preventative as it's informational for certain. And so when I say preventative, it, so we, it is a tool, right? Like, when I'm speaking of as generic as I can go, this is a clue. When I'm talking to my command team and we're determining of what asset and resource allocation should look like, what the patrol function of any given day should look like, I said, this is a indicator of future violence. Like gunfire isn't, we don't live in a very rural area where it's very commonplace based on the nature and environment you live, that it's even permissible. So when we see that a neighborhood over the last two or three days has had a increase in gunfire, now it may not result in a victimization, but they're not, it's oftentimes not being fired into the air, it's fired at somebody that just didn't strike them. And it's indicative of future violence in certain instances, and it allows us to direct our resources toward that area. So preventative in that way, I would say, certainly. It gives us an opportunity to determine what potential conflict looks like well before there's a victim associated to it.
Sure. So, and I think you kind of got to the point there that the technology itself really isn't preventative. It's the response of what you do with the technology, what you do with the data that makes it preventative here. I think the, the, one of the critiques that I've seen people have on ShotSpotter is that this actually doesn't prevent, prevent crime. And I don't think that we are expecting it to. In the same way, I was talking to Councilman Cogle this morning. This is a really crude analogy, so I apologize for this, but I'm not that smart of a man. The, in the same way that a fire alarm or a smoke detector doesn't prevent fire, you know, the smoked alarm might trigger a sprinkler system. And, and, but this right here is the smoke alarm or the fire detector. It's also not the arson investigation to figure out how the fire happened afterwards. But when we have a situation where there's a fire or someone who may have been shot, we want to make sure we can get the appropriate responses right away there. And is anything wrong with that analogy?
Very fair. Yeah, I mean, it gets the resources there quicker, allows the scene to be secured, and it gets lifesaving measures from police firing EMS into the area to treat those lives. So just as the firemen are bringing water to, you know, to a fire alarm activation, this is bringing many resources to preserve human life. And I think to your, your point, a lot of public safety, police fire EMS are not necessarily preventative, they're reactive and responsive. We do have now the Office of Community Health and Safety, we have our Violence Interruption Teams, they're all, that group, along with the responders, are working on solving root cause of these things. But if we don't know they even happened or we're not aware they're happening, we're not going to get to root cause. Part of what ShotSpotter and many other technologies we have, including just nine one one calls, provide us the opportunity to see how many shots we had. I mean, as pointed out, ten percent, only ten percent of the shots fired that have been picked up by ShotSpotter are called into nine one one. Now, there could be some thought, well, we have ShotSpotter, I don't need to call, which is incorrect. We always want people to call. If you think you hear gunfire, please call nine one one. If you think you see something, call nine one one. Then it gets recorded, right? And that's part of what we're going to look at with Carrick is, are the nine one one calls for this type of call going to go down? Because people think, oh, ShotSpotter will get it. Just like at a crash scene, many people will drive by, they won't call because they'll say somebody else will do it. So we have to be careful with that and educate the public that we need everyone to call and let us know when something's happening so then we can look at that, just like ShotSpotter, et cetera, that we can look at each incident to see what root cause was. And then that's how you work towards prevention. It's what they did in the fire industry years ago. That's why there's now fire code that says you must have sprinklers, alarms, all these things. So to reduce the number of people that died in fires. If we want to reduce the people that die by gunfire, we have to track all of our gunfire to figure out what the root causes are. And a lot of it is their social determinants of health and, and all that. And that's where that comes in on the preventive side of public safety. And a lot of it is their social determinants of health and, and all that. And that's where that comes in on the preventive side of public safety, which, but all this works together in the ecosystem too. And unfortunately, we do have things that aren't always preventative but responsive, but that's the only way we can provide those services.
Well, you kind of beat my third point there of, of how we, we get to prevention, but, you know, I, I appreciate you taking the analogy there. One other question, kind of on a different subject here, is how often, and how do we do maintenance on ShotSpotter? Does it, did, does, did they do maintenance? Do we come around? How, how exactly does that work? How often does it happen?
So we contract with ShotSpotter for gunshot detection. They maintain the sensors, they deploy the sensors. They provide us, you know, kind of a, a health report on those. As soon as they sense that there's a communications failure, you know, there's no power to it, they have a local subcontractor that maintains those for them and they go out and, and they, you know, address those immediately. So they visit all the sensors on a reoccurring basis to ensure that, you know, they have not been vandalized, they haven't been taken down because new, new pole maintenance or a house or a property was sold and, you know, they may have taken it down in the transition, not knowing what it is. So they're pretty good about that. As far as, hey, they're there the, the first Monday of every month or something, we're not, we don't know that well.
Sure.
But we do know from meeting with them on a monthly basis that they provide us with, hey, you know, we had, you know, a few sensor issues this month. We addressed them. Health is good. And then if there's anything, you know, large, when there's a large scale power outage based upon a storm, they'll send a notification over that says, hey, you know, a number of sensors in the Zone Three neighborhood of the city were out due to a power outage for two hours, 15 minutes. Health has been checked and the system is fully operational again.
Cool. And so the maintenance of it is already included in the, in the contract?
It is.
Cool. Gotcha. All right. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Second round. Did I see your hand, Councilperson Warwick? Oh, okay. Please proceed.
Yeah, thanks. So I do want to say, just in response to some of my colleagues, you know, it, it, it feels like ShotSpotter should be a great benefit, right? And at some point, I assume folks in various communities, you know, Councilman Mosley's district, I'm not, I'm not sure which neighborhood specifically asked for this because they have gun violence problem. And naturally, because ShotSpotter, a number of years ago, very popular to write, the hot new tool that was going to help prevent gun violence. And this company came to a lot of cities and said that this will be a great tool and you should get it. And the folks in Pittsburgh wanted it too. Makes perfect sense. But the reality is that a number of cities across the United States are quite clearly saying, this tool doesn't live up to what it has promised to do. That is well documented, right? It's so, so this isn't coming out of the blue. I do want to clarify that for my colleagues. Now, whether or not the data is, you know, is it ShotSpotter that's not letting us have data that we need? Or is it us that we're just not collecting the data that we should need? I don't know. I mean, look, even this data that you have here, which I think is the same report you shared during the briefing, I have not gotten that report. I don't know if any of my fellow members have looked at these numbers, like had it, you know, a hard copy for myself to look at. Again, I, you know, I, I have, my team is watching this and sort of trying to come up with questions based on a paper that they can't see. You know, of the 90% of the 4,000 or so alerts that didn't have a 911 call, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so there's, you know, 4,000, almost 5,000 alerts that didn't have a 911 call. How many of those were verified gunshots?
Shots fired, homicides?
Verified gunshots.
So I think.
By, by the police who, who, who came to the call.
I think that would be the numbers that we had shared kind of when we met prior so that, you know, that was responsible for 123, 98 of the 123 city homicides in two years were covered by ShotSpotter. There were 767 incidents where evidence was recovered. There were 115 arrests and then there were 150 firearms recovered stemming from those 4,563 alerts.
But I think maybe to your question, we don't verify in the way maybe you're asking. So when we get the call from ShotSpotter, we assume it to be verified. It is, that's, it's the process in which their technology works to say they verified it with, with the measures and the MAC, at the, from the artificial intelligence to the human verification, that that sound that they heard is gunfire. So we treat those calls as verified as we receive them. So there's not an affirmation, a second affirmation process that the police take part in, other than, other than responding.
Right. But, but we don't know how many of those were, like when we responded that were gunshots?
Well, there are many, many instances where we respond and there's nobody there. So when I woke up this morning at 7:10, I had two notifications. One was from address on Rose L. Court. The officers responded, when they responded to the scene, there was, there was not a victim and there was not evidence. That didn't make the notification unverified or part of that six or four to eight percent. The program and the platform verifies it through its artificial intelligence and then the human verification in, in its lab to say that that was probable gunfire. When we get there, either there is or isn't. So we don't have another process that says, yes, we can say 400, 100% that that was gunfire. We allow the technology to do that for us.
And that is the information that ShotSpotter holds proprietary?
They hold proprietary the original sound, right? Not the, not the, not the sound transferred to us. Whatever all of that captured sound was in the moment from the sensor, they do not provide or release to us. They provide and release to us the actual gunshot noise.
So, I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate at this point, but it wouldn't, it would be a ShotSpotter's benefit to have more gunshot, more like verified gunshots than not verified gunshots.
If you believed you were operating or engaging with a.
If you were adjusting your technology to do something that you wanted to say that it was doing.
I don't know. I think, I'd have to say, I think I believe I would be dealing with an unethical vendor. And in that instance, I don't believe this company is that. If, if, I'm doubting the algorithm and the process in which they make that decision.
I mean, we've had a number of data folks come up and testify. I mean, I'm, you know, I, I'd be curious their thoughts on that. So I'm just saying, it's not, it's, this isn't, this isn't sort of out of the blue, like we're just, you know, asking questions just to be difficult, right?
That's fair.
These are valid questions that other cities have asked and have decided that this tool isn't worth paying for. So that's why we're having this long conversation. That's more for my colleagues than for you all. I think you, you understand. So, okay, I do want to just, how long would it take, how long, you know, does it take? So to get the, you know, from the time this is approved to get it up and running in Carrick?
So once the, the final approval is, you know, we do have a proposed area, they will begin permitting for sensor deployments. And usually it's about a 90-day turnaround from, you know, contract ink until, you know, what they call is go live.
Okay, so, okay, so about three months. So I mean, I guess here I kind of want to just, if possible, a little interrogatory with Councilman Coghill. I mean, I think we should be looking, I think we should get the, know what information the Controller needs, right? Know what data we want to be collecting. And if we're expanding this thing in Carrick, have, you know, have the before and after. I mean, it's like we have a test case right here. I, I don't know. I'll, I'll let you speak to that, Councilman.
Are you asking to delay it?
Like how, no, we'll just, how do we, how do we make sure that this happens? That's what I'm asking. How do we make sure that the Controller gets the information she needs to do? Because all of us can sit here and speculate, right? But the Controller can do an audit. That's, that's what we need is an audit, right? Not just, you know.
I mean, based on, so there is an email a little bit with the law. Solicitor Freedson, our, the city solicitor, I think, your office, your office, and the Controller's office around the language in the contract, which is kind of what we're looking at. The language doesn't prohibit the city from reviewing that information. It just prohibits us from how we, on how we publish the gun data, shots fired information. That's kind of where we have to talk through with sound thinking, AKA ShotSpotter, around what that looks like. I don't think it prevents the audit from occurring. It will reduce what maybe can be put in the public audit and that can be put in front of council at a public setting. That's where we're kind of hung up at with sound thinking, not so much that we can't start to look at the information that we collect so then the auditor has a better underst, Controller's audit team has a better understanding of what we can give them. It's more of how that gets published publicly. That's where it starts to turn into a, into where the contract language talks about, that we do have full access for our own internal purposes. It's just how we provide that externally is with permission of sound thinking and ShotSpotter.
So is this something we can figure out in a week before we vote on this?
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Okay. When you say figure out, you mean the data that we're looking for, the added data? Let me just ask you gentlemen, is there any data being withheld that you would care to see from ShotSpotter or?
No, I don't believe there's any data that I need to digest or need to have available. More importantly, I'm not sure there's data that, other than what we've heard from council in, in our session prior to this meeting, that information's all readily available and I don't believe there's any one on this side of the table and/or from sound thinking that would be, or objective, or object to you all having it or us having access to it. The questions and information that I hear council concerned about, we have access to provide and we have access to. So I'm not overly concerned.
So into what you said, Director, it doesn't stop the, our Controller from auditing whatever information she's looking, added information she's looking to, to give us.
Yeah, they would just have to agree to confidentiality on that and that, and there, there are reasons for some of this. It's, you don't want to set a precedence where this information becomes public.
I agree.
And then prosecutors, not just here, but prosecutors anywhere could use that as other, some other cities have done for the wrong reasons or whatever it might be. Once things become public, it's a little more challenging to keep them, you know, confidential because there is information that you may not want out there that could negatively impact a neighborhood around activities that's happening. Where, that there's a person in a neighborhood that's constantly shooting their gun, that's, might not be something that should be public because then folks can find out, judge that person erroneously. That's something that's kept closely within the city that we don't have the right to share.
You have the floor, but if, if I'm receiving the question, right? What, you would like to see what information the Controller can obtain through her audit before we approve this contract? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I would, so is there, are you able to give a report to the Controller of the data that you have so that she can see? I think that would be helpful if she could see what data you have to give to start with, right? And then she can look at that data and say, can I do, can I ask the questions and do the audit that I need to do with the data that you all are able to provide?
Yeah, we can get the Controller the monthly reports that we get. So that's a starting point at least for her and her team to take a look at.
Reports from ShotSpotter, but then also your, the data that you're collecting.
Right. Well, the data we collect is ours to just, you know, well, within boundaries of Korea and other state regulations. They're within our control, the ShotSpotter. It's just a matter of whether, how that can get public.
So you can, you can integrate the ShotSpotter data with the whatever incident report data that you're then.
Right. We, the main part is, like I said, a lot of the things you're asking are things that ShotSpotter wouldn't collect, but we would. So we have to make sure we're collecting similar data like that. I'm, I'm not sure what reports you were looking at from other cities, but it would be helpful if we received those to get a better understanding of what all you're looking for. So then we can make sure we are starting to collect or we may, or a lot of what we do collect, whether there was evidence found, whether there was a gun recovered, that sort of thing. But, you know, whether there was a tourniquet placed or not, we are now collecting that. So it's, if it's our internal reporting system, it's just a matter of adding that collection point.
Okay. I mean, I think that would be helpful before we approve expanding, like can we use this Carrick example as the, you know, ultimately as the reporting tool?
Yeah, and I don't foresee it being any.
For the larger program.
Issue of an audit, it may, like I said, there may be information that would be required to be redacted, which is common of a lot of public safety related reports. You know, because of, even with EMS fire, because of HIPAA, police with Korea.
Yeah, like personally, right.
There's personal information, we would have to make sure. It may be internally used, but not shared publicly.
No, that makes sense. Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize that I'm kind of on the road today. But I was able to catch most of the discussion. Can you all hear me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. And so I just wanted to reiterate, I think what I've heard and what most members have said, is that we've heard really dramatically contrasting numbers about ShotSpotter in today's discussion, both the public comment and discussing this paper. There's a citation that I think a lot of the public commentators were quoting from a Carthier justice. It says that in Chicago, ShotSpotter alerts resulted in kind of no evidence of anything 86% of the time. And it's a, precisely, it said to, there was not any gun-related crime and 86% of the time turned up no crime at all. So basically dead-end deployments. And today at the table, I heard our public safety personnel saying that ShotSpotter is accurate 96% of the time. And so I think that difference is that, you know, are, are we in Pittsburgh also seeing 86% of the deployments from ShotSpotter alerts kind of resulting in just dead ends or not? And then also kind of further, we may not have this question today. I think this is still a discussion in front of us. And then I think moreover, the important question for myself and others is that, let's say, let's say we do. Let's say we do have 86% dead-end deployments from ShotSpotter, the 4,000 ShotSpotter alerts that we're, we're looking at. Is that actually a higher number than 911? And so I think what Councilwoman Warwick was saying that, you know, we have a kind of perfect experiment possible in that we have kind of free ShotSpotter data from Carrick. And if there's a wall of a body to deploy in Carrick, then we can compare and contrast those timeframes. And we also heard that, one of the things that really is not in these articles criticizing the technology was not just that ShotSpotter resulted in some criminal charges being pressed or in evidence or a prevention of a gun crime. But what we really heard from lots of, I think, numbers and anecdotes and narratives is that it very often results in victims being saved because of either knowing they were there because of ShotSpotter and the lack of 911 reporting. But also, even if in the cases where they overlapped with 911 reporting, there's a higher response time, a much, much greater faster response time. And so if you, if you'd like to respond, I just wanted to make sure that I was kind of like summarizing what I heard.
I, I think when you say dead end, I think just maybe that's where, there, we just need clarity. And maybe that's even to Councilwoman Warwick's question of validation on the notification. So there is accuracy in the saying that when the officers arrive on scene, there is no indication of gunfire because there's no victim. That's not to say that it didn't occur. We're relying on the technology to say that it's occurring. occurring. And, and in that, when Chicago and that MacArthur report speaks to 40,000 events that, that are dead end, it's saying that when the officers arrived unseen, that they didn't find a victim and therefore they determined, not that the gunfire detection system was inaccurate or that, that it was unverified, that it actually just a call's unfounded. And, and so in that, it's not, no one, I don't think Chicago PD, from what I understand and the conversations I've had with my peers there, suggest that it's, it doesn't work or that the vendor's unethical. It's just suggesting when they get there, thankfully, no one was struck by gunfire, but it doesn't, like I've, there were three or four over the weekend, there are multiple gunfire events that no one was hit. It wasn't that the gunfire didn't occur, it's just that it wasn't, it, it didn't result in victimization, thankfully. And we have a lot of those where they have many rounds fired and just no one struck. And we consider that as unfounded incident, we don't look into or it doesn't go much further than that, other than having and noting it as a call response, but it would be a dead-end call in the way in which the MacArthur report spoke. So it's not saying that it's a false activation or that, that the, the technology has failed, it's just saying that when the officers arrived on there, no one was hit by gunfire. And, and I think that's something that's really important to, to clarify for, for those that, that believe that that report is saying that the, the technology failed 40,000 times because that's not the case.
Okay, so, thank you for that clarification. And so I think that, again, the conversation in front of us for ShotSpotter kind of citywide and for our future is, you know, do, do, we don't know for Pittsburgh whether we are seeing 86% dead ends right now. And then we don't know if the dead ends, there, I think that when people talk about data and the audio files, they're looking to ShotSpotter to really actually prove that the 86% of ShotSpotter alerts weren't false alerts. And that's kind of the more, again, national level criticism of, of their technology. And then also for our calls where we have responded, Pittsburgh may be above 86% dead-end calls, maybe below 86% dead-end calls, we actually kind of don't know, I think, or maybe we do from your service reports, I'll have to, I'll have to hear that out. Again, whether it's worse or not worse than just relying on 911, is it worth the kind of marginal cost, which is a big marginal cost, which is about a million a year citywide or more? And as Councilwoman Lavelle spoke, there are, there are victims who may not have survived that we can say survived because of ShotSpotter. And then I think there's kind of like one other nuance, which is that there is a claim in cities where ShotSpotter is deployed and is not deployed and, and there was a map of their deployments that was leaked, so that we are able to see the map of where we have ShotSpotter deployed. It's on the internet, I saw it on Twitter. And the claim that, that if there is kind of over, like above deployments that would have been there with, if we didn't have ShotSpotter, so if that 86% dead-end calls are increasing the police calls to those neighborhoods above and beyond what was there before ShotSpotter is, is the concern that I heard from the public comment, so that it, there's a result of kind of over deployment, over policing, but the result in kind of almost, the, the prospect of people being, you know, maybe harassed to a level like receiving citations that they wouldn't be receiving in non-ShotSpotter territory. And I did really hear that kind of discussed at length at the table, but I might have missed it.
So, I think we discussed this a little bit even in our other session. I think the, historically where we did not have ShotSpotter technology, we would have a response to the neighborhood on a 911 call, but it would be so generic, think about that, it's so generic that every person, as the officers driving by, kind of looks suspicious and has a potential for engagement, right? Because we're looking maybe in a three-block radius when we'd be looking in a 25-foot radius. And the level of engagement is more likely to be increased from a general 911 call that doesn't, or lacks specificity versus one that has the ability for specific triangulation location, potential video evidence with the current video system that we have in place and, and that we're not blindly responding to neighborhoods typically are black communities and, and everybody is suspicious because of this one 911 call for gunfire. It, it's very specific in where, which we should respond. I tell you that it's important to understand that 98 of the 123 homicides in 2022 and 2023 were in locations where ShotSpotter existed. So it wasn't taking us to a neighborhood that we wouldn't otherwise have been in, the, the gun crime was taking us to that neighborhood. This just enhanced our ability to respond in that moment. And, and I think that's what's important to acknowledge, it's not that this is creating additional crime or creating additional interest in a neighborhood, it's actually allowing us and providing us with the appropriate information to police a neighborhood responsibly and we hadn't been able to do that in, in, in some instances. And I think this is just another tool to allow that to occur.
Thank you. I believe there was some interesting kind of like, you know, pursuing the discussion more broadly after today, so I won't ask any more questions today, but thank you for your answers. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coghill, second round.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe the confusion's on my part or some member's part, I'm not sure. When you say 86% false alarm, that's not, that doesn't come to us and we check it out, that's within their ShotSpotter system, correct?
I think we need to define when Pittsburgh says dead-end call, what we mean by dead-end call. Like, so the system is, that's, which, I think what they're saying is if you used our stats of when we've recovered evidence, encountered a victim, right, that it is, that the percentages are, they're 86% of the time, nothing was there, we didn't have, there was no victimization. So there's only victimization 16% of the time and/or evidence and/or suspect firearm recovered using the data that we provide. If that's what we're saying dead-end call is, then it's not that the, that there wasn't gunfire 86% of the time, there was just not associated evidence or victimization in those 86% of the responses. There are another 4,500 calls-
Never make it.
That never get set, that the system and the technology and the analysis say is not gunfire.
So that other 4,000 that you're referring to is part of the 86%, or the 86% is on the city's end as to, that doesn't lead, whether we call it dead-end or not, doesn't lead to, you know, evidence of a gunshot. Is that on our end or is that combined with the 4,000 responses that never make it?
So I believe, just to clarify, the 86% came out of the Chicago report-
Thank you.
For the MacArthur report. So that is not a, this 86% is not a-
It's not a Pittsburgh statistic.
When we talk about the 86%, you know, dead-end calls, you know, in Chicago, as the chief alluded to earlier, those were, you know, calls that they were just not recovering a victim. So that doesn't, you know, account for the times that, you know, evidence was recovered, you know, there was a shirt left behind, there was a magazine left behind, there were casings left behind, there was a vehicle struck by gunfire. The 86 is not anything indicative of Pittsburgh statistics of, as today.
Got it, got it.
The, the, earlier what we talked about, the 92 to 98% accuracy, you know, of the system is 92 to 98% per month are details that are being passed along to us-
From Shot.
-without any type of, you know, interaction from the city. So if we notify ShotSpotter that, hey, we went to the call at 123 Main Street and that was fireworks, that takes away from their 100% accuracy.
Right.
If we had, you know, a shooting that happened inside of a car, we make them aware of it, it didn't get passed along because it was muffled, that takes away from that.
Got it.
So the, the 86% dead end in Chicago and the 92 to 98 are kind of apples and oranges in the chart.
I'm glad you're verifying it, Dan. So when ShotSpotter notifies the city of Pittsburgh, it is 90-plus percent accurate that it was a gunshot?
That is correct.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Whether we can verify it or not by a human-
Either way.
Or victimization is not relevant.
Absolutely. Let me ask you this, has there ever been an incident where we had eyewitnesses call 911, but ShotSpotter did not pick up within the range?
Yes.
Is that right? Yeah. How often does that happen?
Well, that's the four to six, it falls into that range of four to six percent.
Okay.
Again, and really, I, if I can speak to when it's so beneficial to us, also we'll speak when it's critical or when we criticize the system. And that was the Penn Avenue homicide, but it occurred within a vehicle. So it occurred within the passenger compartment of the vehicle, which then screws the sound, which then impacts the sensors and therefore we weren't notified via ShotSpotter of, of the homicide, we were notified via 911 or a call for service, citizen call for service.
Got it. So getting back to the sensors, we don't place the sensors, the company places the sensors. And if they choose to do that on private property, that's between them and that property owner and we have no clue as to where that sensor might be.
So we pass along data to ShotSpotter-
Right.
-for gunfire incidents, non-fatal shootings and homicides. They take that, all that data, they run it through, you know, their algorithm and they say, these are the areas that you would benefit from, you know, the best amount of ShotSpotter coverage minus any type of, you know, the Route 51 corridor where you may have wooded hillsides that, you know, you can't hang sensors kind of in the middle of a tree.
Right.
They disqualify those areas and pass that along. So we do not know, the only sensors that we know are the ones that are on city facilities that we were the ones that signed those MOUs for. But if they have, you know, an agreement with a resident, and, you know, they go into the neighborhoods and do community canvases and knock and talks and, you know, they're very receptive, residents are happy to be getting the technology, you know, they explain it to them and, you know, pass that along. But to answer your question in short, yes, those agreements are between them and the residents, the business owners, you know, et cetera.
Right. So really two things, and you can elaborate if you'd like, but number one, the safety, when I say that the safety, I mean the safety of the victim, the safety of the neighborhood is a huge benefit for ShotSpotter, the quicker response time. And the pinpointing of where that shot, when you can pinpoint a shot within 25 square feet, that to me saves a lot of legwork, a lot of knocking on doors, a lot of wandering around, people, neighbors saying it came from here, no, it came from there. So that is accurate, is that right? The 25-foot radius, is that proven to be as accurate as the ShotSpotter itself?
Yeah, the data's, the data and then the information provided from the notification has been extremely accurate.
It's zero as it down to a home, if it's from, within a home, you know the house.
Within 25 square feet and, and, and that has not been problematic, nor has it been determined unreliable for us. So from just an officer's safety standpoint, we're responding to a crime of violence with more information than we have ever had in the past, which then increases the ability and the capacity for officer's safety. And that they're not going to drive around this corner and all of a sudden there's a gunman standing there, that they have that information while en route to the call so that they compare in advance to arriving for a potential threat. And that's critically important for, for our officers' wellbeing.
Yep.
And as Councilman Wilson alluded to, you know, the, the video evidence that, you know, that comes with this, you know, is game-changing, you know? Video does not waver its testimony, video always stays the same, so if you present a case and you have, you know, video, you don't have to worry about that changing, it's, it's, you know, admissible evidence and it shows exactly the picture that happened on that street that day.
Right. So in short, I was reluctant for ShotSpotter to come to my neighborhoods, however, I welcome it now because my constituents welcome it, they want it. I would not like to see any delay in the action, whether the Controller has the audit or not, she can do that work without, we're doing it right now through, over probably half the city is covered, is it, is it? No, not even, not even close.
18 square miles and then adding the one in Carrick would bring us to 19 of 52.
Yeah. Eventually we'd like to see it citywide, to be honest with you, I have many gunshots in and out of neighborhoods that I don't have ShotSpotter in, so. So in, I don't ask you to write legislation and to make amendments, I believe that you know your work, I believe that you're getting the information and the data that you need, you don't feel shortchanged from ShotSpotter, so I trust in your professionalism and I thank you for coming to the table and answering these questions. Go ahead.
Just to clarify also, what we're asking council for is approval to negotiate the contract at this point, right? I mean, we have the costs, but the details, the contract's not signed when you all approve it, that's signed after the fact.
Right.
Council doesn't have-
Right.
My understanding is council doesn't have the authority to negotiate the contracts, you can give us feedback so then we can take that information back to the vendor and say this is what we'd like to see in the contract, which we're in the process of doing, but-
So hopefully we'll approve that shortly. And you say, Dan, 30 days from the time it's inked, or 30 to 90 days?
About 90 days.
90 days, so we're looking at, uh, June, maybe sometime at the end of summer, we hope to have this, as you said, live.
Make the go-live, yeah.
Make it go-live, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Once approved, we'll work as diligent as possible to move it forward.
Right. Okay, thanks, appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Just briefly, I heard you mention about the contract, you know, I'm going to say something about it. I think the contract should come back to council after you negotiate it for an up or down vote. We don't have to, we can't negotiate, but we can approve and we should approve and it's our responsibility to approve. And I know the law department might have some opinions, but we'll get some outside consultants to really, I always pay for that out of my office, to make sure we're getting legitimate information back for council. Thank you.
Yeah, I have no problem with that either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 366, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain until, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put an amendment forward to make sure it comes back, thank you.
Two abstentions? Thank you. Thank you.
I'll vote, I'll just want to say I'll vote for it next week, but I just want to make sure we have that, that it comes back to council.
Thank you. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 401, resolution providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc. for costs associated with the Charles Anderson Bridge project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $3,826,849.93 in increase of $696,525.27 from the previously legislated contract authorization.
Motion to approve? Oh wait, sorry, no.
Are we on 401?
Yes. Oh, that's, oh, sorry, motion to approve, apologies, yeah.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 401, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 351, deferred papers.
Bill 351, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for airspace leasing, ownership and maintenance obligations of a bicycle facility on East Ohio Street between Madison Avenue and Chestnut Street. This resolution serves to authorize only the agreement or agreements at no cost to the city.
Motion to table this bill, discussion?
With discussion.
Second.
Yeah, I want to thank the department for updating me on this. Basically, there's going to be another bill that's introduced in the coming months that would satisfy what we're, the goal that we're trying to get to here. And so we're going to table this bill now and looking forward to the work that they're going to do with Penn Don to get the right bill on the table.
Any further discussion on a motion to table? Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Bill, bill has been tabled, Bill 351 has been tabled. That moves us on to Land, Houston Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill number 409, resolution providing for the designation as a historic site under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Veterans Memorial Parklet, located at 1020 Brookline Boulevard in Brookline in the 19th Ward, city of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second to hold for a cable cast, uh, public hearing, discussion? All those in favor of a cable cast public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Bill will be held. New papers, Bill 375.
Bill 375, resolution authorizing- Bill 375, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Landmarks SGA LLC, to Create Historic District Guidelines for the Mexican War Streets Expansion, Shenley Farms, and Roslin Place Historic Districts, for an Amount Not to Exceed $70,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill 375 gets affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 367, Resolution Amending Resolution 165 of 2023, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto for Professional Services with E Plus Technology, Inc., for System Critical Adjustments, Improvements, and Upgrades to Maintain the City of Pittsburgh's Network Functionality by Increasing the Approved Amount by $20,000 and Extending the Contract Until August 31, 2024. The amended total cost not to exceed of the contract will now be $699,024.8.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 367, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. Moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Mosley.
Bill 368, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 126 Hazelwood Avenue and 0 Hazelwood Avenue at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 368, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 370.
Bill 370, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Southwestern PA Commission for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $96,801.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 370, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 371.
Bill 371, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Connect Congress of Neighboring Communities for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,781.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 371, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 372.
And Bill 372, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority in the Amount of $98,471 for Storm Water Work Completed at Lawn and Ophelia Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 372, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, you did. Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our meeting agenda, we do have announcements. On Monday, April 29, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 256 relative to the downtown real estate tax. Council will hold their regular and standing committees meeting next Tuesday, April 30, and Wednesday, May 1, at 10 a.m. respectively. Registration ends at 9 a.m., the morning of each meeting. On Tuesday, April 30, at 12 noon, council will hold a pre-agenda interview for the directorship of the Department of City Planning. On Wednesday, May 1, at 9:30 a.m., council will hold a pre-agenda interview, will hold two pre-agenda interviews for the Housing Opportunity Fund Board and the Planning Commission. Also, on Wednesday, the 1st, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 2024-0277 relative to removing the review, excuse me, removing the review of the sidewalk cafes from the zoning code, followed by a cable cast post-agenda discussion at 2:30 p.m. on the Affordable Housing Bond Spending Plan chaired by Council President Lavelle. To register to speak at these council meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage. You may also register by calling the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138. Please refer to the webpage for registration deadlines. Any comment from members?
Do you just want to mention Passover?
There's a question about Dr. Bay's interview, and it's being called a pre-agenda interview on Tuesday, pardon? Yes, pre-agenda interview at 12 noon on Tuesday, April 30.
Cool, thank you. I just didn't hear it.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Coghill.
That's because members asked for an additional amount of time.
Yep, I appreciate it, thank you.
A longer interview for the city planning director. Councilwoman Coghill Smith.
I just want to see if you want to say something about Passover.
Oh, I will. Is there anyone else who wants to comment? Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I did, I wanted to call for a post-agenda on litter, but I want to schedule it for, like, three months from now so that we can work with the administration. So I just, because it was Earth Day this past week, I know people had cleanups all across their districts, you know, lots of good work done by our volunteers, citizen volunteers. So, you know, in three months' time, I think that'll give us a little bit of time to kind of regroup with the administration, kind of understand ideas and plans and whatnot, and then hopefully have a post-agenda to explain to the public how we're going to tackle.
Can I second that, second?
The motion is second for a cable cast post-agenda on litter, any discussion? All those in favor of?
Discussion, I just want to say, I think that we've done a lot in this area, I think it's seeing the, we've hired a lot of people in DPW, I think it's starting to, we would like to start to see some of those people that we have already hired doing some of these jobs, because we, I think since I've been in office, we did the anti-litter campaign I started, did the e-recycling with the Engelman, did the grass-cutting program to help people across the city so they're not struggling to get their grass, so their place looks nice, and we started the Clean and Lean program from the DPW. And I think with all those efforts, we see more trash now than we ever have, and we have more people hired, and I think we need to understand what direction DPW and what they're getting, what the employees are getting, and what support they're getting to do their job. So before we talk about expanding or doing any more, I think we have more than we've ever had, we'd like to see them do the job, thank you. Be directed to do the job, I think they could do the job.
Okay, sorry. All those in favor of a post-agenda? Sorry, further discussion?
Just real quickly here, to echo Councilwoman's point and support the motion as well, you know, I think that we spend, the shift has changed that we see litter cleanup as a volunteer activity, and we need to no longer see it as a volunteer activity, but a core function of the city. So I think that's really important, and I really appreciate you guys doing that.
Further discussion on the motion for a post-agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of a cable cast post-agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
We will schedule the post-agenda. Any further discussion? I wanted to wish everyone who celebrates a meaningful Passover beginning tonight, and I know I'll be celebrating with my family, and I also wanted to remind everyone that Election Day is tomorrow. Happy Election Day. Can I take a motion to, we had no absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1761.47][1761.47][music]